Welcome to the Asheville City Council meeting. If everyone could just take a moment to silence their cell phones. We also have a sign-in table outside if you would like to speak at any point on the agenda. If you haven't already signed to speak and you decide you want to, please just make your way out into the hall and sign up to speak and it will populate on my list, which I don't have in front of me yet, but I will. And if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Maggie, can you tell me who would have sent the sign-on sheet?
Oh, you have it in front of you. Okay, well, you're going to have to tell until I find it.
Mayor, it's on your -- if you could.
It's not. I'm on a different.
She's on a different laptop.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, tonight we -- I'm going to -- hold on, let me make an announcement first. For tonight's meeting, we have simultaneous interpretation available for our Spanish-speaking community members. If you would like to take advantage of the service, please see staff at the check-in table, and they will provide you with the equipment needed. And that announcement will now be made in Spanish.
Para la reunión del día de hoy estamos ofreciendo interpretación simultánea al español. Si desea utilizar este servicio, por favor, vaya a la mesa de registro afuera y le proporcionaremos el equipo necesario. Gracias.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to begin with our consent agenda. Council, do I have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda, or do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is Sage. I'll move.
This is Maggie. I'll second.
Okay, and we have a couple of people signed up to speak under the consent agenda, and the first person is Susan Bean. And folks speaking tonight -- as you make your way up, as folks speaking tonight, you'll have three minutes, and if you'll just watch the lights on the lectern, green means go, orange means you're getting close, and red in the buzzing sound means stop.
I'll just share.
Thank you.
You can leave.
Okay, I was waiting for the green. Trying to follow direct. Hello, my name is Susan Bean, and I am the Housing and Transportation Director at Mountain True, and I am here to speak in support of the missing middle housing study that the city of Asheville has proposed. As an environmental advocacy group, Mountain True recognizes the undeniable connection between the built environment and the natural environment. How we build in our cities and where people are able to live has a tremendous impact on our region's farms and forests. The more choices that people have about how close they can live to schools, jobs, and grocery stores, the more they can access the lifestyle that suits their needs best. By creating more housing options that are within walking distance of restaurants and bus routes and commercial centers, people will be better able to age in place or decrease their commute times. This kind of lifestyle is both attractive to a growing population and also benefits the environment through increased energy efficiency and decreased carbon emissions. The development of modest-sized, compactly-built, energy-efficient housing within walking distance of jobs and services is one of the best things that we can do to fight climate change. I hope that this study will take into consideration concerns existing residents like me have about the prospects of gentrification and displacement, preservation of urban tree canopy, and local neighborhood character. However, I'm also hopeful that considering such concerns from the start of this study as we pursue the creation of more climate-friendly housing options for people who want to find a home for themselves in our community will allow for all of us to welcome new neighbors in a spirit of cooperation rather than competition. I look forward to continuing to support the city of Asheville as it works to remove barriers to missing middle housing and seeks to provide more housing choice within our community for our neighbors who need places to live. Thank you for your consideration and for this opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Thank you. The second person signed up to speak under the consent agenda item is Grace Barron.
Hi, City Council. I really appreciate the translation services that are here today. I wanted to speak on Consent Item C, which I would advise that you pull off of the agenda and vote on separately. It is called the Funded Litter and Cleanliness Program, but I think that it could more aptly be named Encampment Clearing Contract. I almost missed this when I was looking over the consent agenda, but this is a half a million dollars in funding. I recognized one company on the list that applied for this, BioOne, because I had the horror of encountering them at an encampment clearing where I watched them bulldoze the belongings of people in our community who have nowhere else to go. I think about what $500,000 in funding could do to help our neighbors. We're often told that there's a trash problem, but there are actually no places for people to put trash at their encampments. There is no offer for waste pickup. We could be using these funds to provide sanitation services. We could be using them to provide warming stations. I don't recall the National Alliance to End Homelessness mentioning anything about spending another half million dollars to bulldoze people's belongings. I have been deeply disappointed by how the ARPA fund process has gone, which is where these funds are coming from. We have little to no transparency in that department, although we do know that Sage Turner crossed Beloved's Tiny Home Project off of her ARPA funding list after Beloved put out a petition to oppose a no-food-sharing ordinance, which is just another way that our city absolutely attacks poor people every chance they get. People who -- we live in the highest cost of living city in North Carolina, and I feel like this item has no business on the consent agenda, as I say over and over again about items that are on our consent agenda. I feel like, you know, our anti-poor policies are completely out of control in our city, and we could actually be using these funds to help each other. I don't know who named this consent item, but I would love to see a breakdown of how much of those funds are going to be used to bulldoze people's homes. I would love to see that information. It's -- and if I've heard some of you talk about going on like a ride-along sometimes. I wonder if you all would like to do a ride-along to an encampment clearing and look in the faces of the people and the pets, the dogs that are screaming out because they see the distress that their owners are in during this traumatic process. Thank you.
We do not have anyone else signed up to speak under the consent agenda item. We have a motion and a second. Council, any other questions before we take a vote?
We did have a lengthy discussion at the pre-meeting on Thursday about Item C that's on the consent agenda. It was fourth from the bottom in the ARPA Equity and Feasibility Scoring, and we do not yet have future funding for this or the staff for it. So we did ask some questions around that. Those meetings are now public and archived.
Yes, I heard that discussion, and I -- this council set six priorities last year at our retreat, and one of them was core services. And specifically, we had a long discussion around cleanliness, and this contract is one of -- there's others that we have been enhancing around cleanliness, but this is specifically to deal with, and maybe the city manager could expand on that, needle waste, biohazards, and those sorts of things.
That is correct. I'm going to ask, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask Greg Schuler with our Public Works Department to respond. He has -- just has more detail.
Yep, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This contract or contracts is going to focus on encampments, but it's also going to focus on more core service delivery, such as roadside litter, hotspots, which may or may not have to do with encampments. I can assure you that staff and our contractors understand that these are people's personal belongings, and there will be sensitivity towards that, but public safety and core service delivery, excuse me, is what we're going to be focused on.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks. Any other questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that is our consent agenda. We do not have any presentations and reports this evening, and so we'll see the exodus here of the consent agenda items. All right, we're going to move into our public hearings. We have a few public hearings. The first is a public hearing to consider rezoning 234 Hendersonville Road from Office District and Highway Business District to Highway Business District. And Will Palmquist is here to tell us about this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Will Palmquist with Planning, Design. I'll be presenting on this rezoning petition for the property at 234 Hendersonville Road. Here you can see the location of the property, just north of the interchange with I-40 and Hendersonville Road. The property is currently used as an existing hotel use. The existing zoning is currently a split combination zoning of Highway Business and Office, and the proposed zoning would change the entire property to Highway Business. The future land use for the property is Urban Corridor. No change in that designation is required for this zoning. And the project rezoning request was approved at the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 1st. In regards to the consistency with Living Asheville's comprehensive plan, the rezoning is consistent with the future land use of Urban Corridor, which in part is to address the needs of commercial development along major thoroughfares. Automobile-oriented development is prevalent within this district, and a wide range of commercial uses is permitted. The rezoning also supports a number of goals in the plan, such as to encourage responsible growth by prioritizing growth and development within designated growth areas, and to facilitate real estate development that maximizes public benefit by establishing accessible and well-connected commercial nodes consistent with strategies outlined in the plan's growth areas. Therefore, staff concurs with the Planning and Zoning Commission and recommends approval of the rezoning, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
You were so thorough. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing for Item A on this rezoning, and then I'm going to close it because no one has signed up to --
The applicant's attorney.
Oh, do you want to speak about it, Bob? All right, feel free. Bob Oost, former city attorney, now out there in the wild world.
Mayor, I thank Will, the mayor and members of council, I thank Will for his presentation. This is about as straightforward a rezoning request as you're ever going to see, and as straightforward a request as I've ever brought to the council. I have a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, which I emailed to Ms. Burleson, but she didn't get.
She just rolled her eyes at you, I think.
She assures me it's not because I've been blocked, but I can make that presentation if you want to see it. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I would like to just take this and so it gets entered in the record. As always, I'm prepared for the technology to fail, and I brought hard copies if you all want to see them. But unless there are any questions, I'm not going to make a presentation, but I would point out, just as a practical matter, that the site is a pretty challenging site to be subject to two different zoning classifications, makes it really hard to do anything else with it that other than what's there. It was -- and that building, the building that's there predates the UDO. It was back in the 1980s, I think it was built. And among other practical difficulties, it makes it difficult to obtain financing to make any kind of improvements to the property. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. I can make a presentation if you want to see it, but if not, I'll sit down.
I think we're good. Good? Good? Thank you, Bob. All right, council, do I have a motion?
If there are no more comments or questions, I'd like to make a motion. A motion to approve the conditional zoning request for the property located at 235 Hendersonville Road from Office One and Highway Business to Highway Business, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and meets the development needs of the community in that the request. Number one, it prioritized growth and development within the designated growth area, and number two, it establishes accessible and well-connected commercial nodes consistent with the strategies outlined in the plan's growth area.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second. The address is 234 Hendersonville Road.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, council, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. The next is a public hearing to consider rezoning 43 Redfern Street from Institutional District/Conditional Zone to RMA, Residential Multifamily Medium Density District, and we're also going to hear from Will on this one.
Thank you, Mayor. This rezoning petition is for a property at 43 Redfern Street, similar to the last one, is a straight rezoning to change the underlying zoning of the property, which you can see here outlined in red, in West Asheville, just south of the West Asheville Library and Community Center, and west of the West Asheville Baptist Church, about a quarter-acre lot with a single-family house on it. That's per the existing zoning Institutional Conditional Zone from 2004 for uses associated with the West Asheville Baptist Church, and the rezoning would change that zoning to Residential Multifamily Medium Density, or RMA, which is what the property was formerly zoned 20 years ago and would be the same zoning as the surrounding neighborhood to the south and the west. Future land use of that property is traditional neighborhood. No change in that designation is required. The rezoning request was recommended for approval at the February 1st Planning and Zoning Commission hearing regarding the rezoning's consistency with the Living Asheville comprehensive plan. The rezoning is consistent with the traditional neighborhood future land use designation in that diverse range of housing types and an intersecting street pattern with cross streets forming blocks. And the rezoning also supports a number of goals in the plan, such as to increase and diversify the housing supply by promoting zoning policies to encourage more housing and to celebrate the unique identity of neighborhoods through creative placemaking by preserving neighborhood identity with the development and maintenance of housing that is affordable to a wide range of income levels. Therefore, staff concurs with the Planning and Zoning Commission and recommends approval of the rezoning, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just a comment, that's a little odd to see institutional zones right there.
Yeah, it was a request by the church in 2004 for institutional with conditions associated to allow for a limited number of uses associated with the church.
Church, okay. Thank you. If there are not any questions, I can make a motion.
Does the applicant want to speak on this? No? Okay, we -- I will open the public comment and close it because we have no one signed up, so please make a motion.
We move to approve the rezoning request for the property located at 43 Redfern Street from Institutional Conditional Zoning to Residential Multifamily Medium Density, RMA, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and meets the development needs of the community in that the request. One promotes zoning policies to encourage more housing, and two preserves neighborhood identity with the development and maintenance of housing that is affordable to a wide range of income levels.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
We'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Counsel, I feel like we're all pretty much dressed in black and off-white except for you today, so just wanted to point that out. All right, I need a motion on Item C on the public hearing agenda to continue this item to March 28th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Counsel, I feel like we're all pretty much dressed in black and off-white except for you today, so just wanted to point that out. All right, I need a motion on Item C on the public hearing agenda to continue this item to March 28th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next, under New Business, we are taking public comment on the fiscal year 2024 budget priorities, and I'm going to turn it over to the city manager, and one thing I will just make a remark about is that by law, cities have to take public comment on the budget prior to adopting the budget, but that is not this, because that happens really close to when we vote. This is an additional moment of public comment on the budget. Take it away, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council, and community members. Taylor Floyd is going to be giving you a more detailed, well, and actually brief presentation before we take a public comment on the budget. Tonight, as you've kind of heard the mayor say, is a kind of a milestone moment for us in that we have never had an opportunity for public input, public comment on the budget process this early. I want to thank budget staff and others for making this happen, and to the community for encouraging and kind of nudging us in this direction. So before Taylor again gives his brief overview, I wanted to comment on an article in numerous emails that council, and I'm sure probably many of you in the audience have received about the public input process, and in particular, comments about the online survey. I want to reiterate again that we have taken a very positive first step by inviting the community to comment on the budget and community needs earlier in the process. But I do want to talk about kind of the online survey and the process. The online survey has been up since February the 6th, and I think it may have been reported that it has only been up and that there's only public comment for a week. When staff checked at 10:30 this morning regarding participation in the survey, approximately 13% of those who shared their race identified as BIPOC. And what that means is Black, Indigenous, and other people of color. I want also specifically to respond to some of the requests that were made to do additional outreach. The group email that most of you received asked that the city extend the time. Yes, we will extend the time by one week. Will you consider printing paper versions of the survey so that those without internet access can participate? Yes, we have done it and will continue to make printable copies of the survey available. Will you consider distributing surveys to community centers in historically Black neighborhoods? Yes, and we have delivered printable surveys in English and Spanish that are available at our recreation centers. Will Cape and the Office of Equity and Inclusion collaborate on a plan ensuring input is gathered from communities of color? Yes, we have done so and will continue to do so. But we have a challenge for you, community. We also invite you that are in the audience, that are watching, to share their survey with your networks. If you need key paper copies of the survey or have a meeting you would like to make us aware of, please call Community Engagement Manager Christina Israel at 828-712-4229, or email her at neighborhoods@ashvillenc.gov, and we will be happy to share that information with you. So thank you, and I will turn it over to Mr. Floyd to provide a brief overview of the budget process.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Good evening, Mayor and council. Taylor Floyd, Budget Manager, and I'm just going to do kind of a high-level overview of our budget and our budget process that will be brief. So starting with our process, we kind of start that off internally in the fall. Staff identify the cost to deliver existing services and the potential cost of new investments that are based on needs and goals that we've identified. Where we are kind of right now in the process is we're transitioning into where we're talking a lot more with you all about, you know, what your priorities are. We're trying to deliver some information about our financial context, especially personnel and revenue projections, as they're key pieces of the budget process. Then we get into April and May, which is the really fun part, where we have to try to figure out how to fit all of this together. That kind of culminates in the proposed budget, the manager's proposed budget in May, and then you all have kind of an opportunity to make adjustments to that proposed budget, and a budget hopefully is adopted before the end of the fiscal year, June 30. And then our new fiscal year starts in July with that budget that you all have adopted, and we start the process all over again. I did want to touch briefly on some prior engagement efforts that we've done, and I won't go through each one of these in detail necessarily, but we have tried a wide variety of things, ranging from in fiscal year 20, or 1920, we did some really deep dive department reviews here with you all, with council. Every department, we did that over five sessions. We also went out into the community, different areas, and had some presentations and did an online survey, much like what we are doing this year. In FY21, we did a presentation at, I'm pretty sure, every single board and commission. Again, just trying to provide information on the budget. We did a lot of work in that year for reimagining public safety and, as a result, reallocated some funding. In FY22, we actually had a consultant-led process that engaged both some public in virtual meetings, that was during COVID, and also our staff, some internal equity discussions. We, again, had another survey there as well. So again, really, every year, we're just trying to iterate on our community engagement and outreach and try to do a little bit better job of getting feedback from the community. Our guiding principles, and this is something that Ms. Campbell kind of brought to the organization, these are things we try to keep in mind through every budget process. The first one is just making sure that we have the resources we need to meet the service delivery expectations in our community. We also want to make sure that we're providing those services at a good value to our customers, and then we're also trying to align our resources with community council and staff goals. And of course, you all will be discussing this later this week at your retreat, but our most recent current-year budget, the priorities that were set for that are, again, listed out there. I won't go through those in detail. Did want to spend a moment just talking about our budget structure. So our total budget, we don't usually talk about this way, but we have our general fund, which is where most of our services are provided, like public safety, sanitation, street maintenance, a variety of things. And that piece of our budget is, as you can see, overwhelmingly funded by our property and sales taxes, are far and away our two largest revenues. In addition, we have some services that we call enterprise funds that are primarily based off of their fees, our largest one being water, and you can see that utility charges being the overwhelming majority of the revenue there. Other enterprise funds include transit, civic center, parking, street cut, and stormwater. I think I got all of them. On the expense side, and again, you all have heard me say this more than once, you can see that salaries, wages, and benefits are more than half of our total budget, all funds together, and that is because, as a service organization, we rely on people to provide those services. And again, kind of wrapping up here, another important part of our budget is our capital budget, and I just wanted to kind of draw some distinctions between that and our operating. First of all, you can see that the size there from what gets adopted annually varies pretty dramatically from 218, that's all of our operating funds, 218 million, to 31 million on the capital side. What we fund in those two places, operating would be one-time, like a plan or a study or services, so trash collection, again, public safety, things like that, whereas on the capital side, it's buildings, roads, infrastructure, water, stormwater, that kind of thing. How it's funded, current-year revenues on the operating side, again, mostly taxes, or in the case of enterprise funds, fees for the services rendered. On the capital side, most of that's funded through debt issuances, bonds. And then finally, the main, the last main distinction is kind of the timeline. So as you all are aware, we adopt an annual operating budget, so every year, you're adopting a new budget, whereas those capital budgets kind of last over multiple years because typically those projects take more than one year to complete. The final thing I want to mention is that both pieces, both the operating and the capital, are really essential to our service delivery. They're both really key pieces. So in summary, community and council priorities and expectations are key to our budget development process. We want to hear from our community what their interests, needs are, because we want to be able to meet those. Most of our services that we provide are funded through property and sales taxes, again, those being our two largest revenue sources. Employees are our most valuable asset, again, the thing that most Employees are our most valuable asset, again, the thing that most of our budget goes towards. And then finally, capital investments are on a longer time horizon and primarily impact future annual budgets. And what I mean by that is those debt payments really come due, if you will, in future annual operating budgets. And I did want to mention, Ms. Campbell mentioned that we do have a survey for folks that are not able to make the public comment tonight. The link is there, the QR code is up there as well. We've tried to publish this. It's available in English, Spanish, Ukrainian, and Russian. And as Ms. Campbell said, we will be pushing out the close of that survey by a week. And with that, unless there are any questions?
At our briefing on Thursday, one of the things that came up is that we might include future capital improvement project updates on the construction happening in this building to have a better understanding about how that fits into the whole puzzle of our capital improvement and if it's on timeline, if it's on budget, what we can expect in the future.
Absolutely. We will be bringing back to you all probably in June, the capital facilities, study, the assessment of all of our capital assets. And I think that that definitely is going to be revealing. And from that, you all will be adopting kind of a path forward in terms of investments. And we will certainly be updating you all on a continuous basis on all of our existing projects, both existing and new or proposed.
Because I know, I joined, I mentioned I joined council on the Zoom square. So, before that, I was in this room a lot, like the folks who are here now. And if you only are in this room or the first floor in the water department, for example, you might not know there's construction happening upstairs.
Any other questions, comments? I'm going to open the public hearing. Okay. We have a number of people signed up to speak under this item. And again, just follow the lights on the, I think we, we'll have time to, we don't have to shorten it or anything. I think we'll have time. So, just follow the lights on the lectern. And this isn't Maggie's presentation. This is our first speaker, Sheila Saret's slide, so put her up on the screen.
Hello, I've got lots to show. Okay, this is where you all want to install a restroom for $650,000. This is very laughable. You all can't manage this area now, so how will you manage it once when the restrooms are built? That bench right there, it needs to be removed. Look at the trash. Now, there's a light right there. There's, you'll see, you need to, there's no lighting. See all down ranking? Every one of these lights have been out for over 10 years and you all known about it because I know who reported it, several people. Look at the trash here at the river, down on the river. I mean, that trash has been there since 2017. Look at that. And that is still there. I saw it there the other day. That's my nephew. His name is Zach Bradley and he went in with North Oak Southern Police end of January and they went in and cleaned this mess up on the river. And that's his boat and that, and he's with his cousin Luke right there. And Zach lives in Transylvania County. He loves to fish and his cousin lives in Henderson County. These guys love to fish. They volunteered and did this. So, just letting you know. So, do you all know what this means? This confetti, graffiti, I mean, is all over the town. Do you know what these numbers mean underneath that? There's one person on council, I'm sure, knows what those numbers mean. It means all cops are B all over the city. These are bridges across the town. Look, this is constant. Right here, somebody just throws a mattress here in front of this business the other day and guess what? This guy's sitting there enjoying it. He's having a good old time, isn't he? We've, look, we've reached world news, nation news. Oh, there's, and here's our Lieutenant Governor being questioned about the violence and crime of Asheville. Look, they're just having a good old time blocking the sidewalk. Look at this. Now, doesn't that look lovely coming inside of Asheville downtown and leaving downtown? Look, businesses being broken into, smashed into. See that light? It needs to be, all down there, there's no lighting at all. It's pitch dark. I watched this guy here get caught on fire two weeks ago. Yes, I did. He caught himself on fire. And so, anyway, there's one I'm missing. But anyway, right here, see this? This is what this area looks like at all times where you want to put that restroom. It is dangerous area and walk down there, I'm telling you, it's pitch dark at night. There, see, see how dark it is? That bench needs to go. So, what I'm saying is, instead of wasting tons of money on useless black lanes, we need to put that money for our police department for better pay and incentives to stay competitive. Why are you all refusing to protect the citizens of Asheville? It don't make sense. Thank you.
And as Ms. Saret just demonstrated, there'll be three minutes for each speaker, so that was perfect. Please watch the lights on the lectern. Okay, the next person signed up to speak is Andrew Clark.
Hello, I'm Andrew Clark, Legislative Director for Beddingfield Shidle, Chapter 14 Disabled American Veterans. I'm here today to offer some words for informed thought, beginning with McCormick Field for more than just a place for a game, but a century-old platform for American celebration and an opportunity to broadcast community awareness. The game is an expression of American science through talented American athletes. When today 95% of American youth are unable to meet basic military fitness standards, $40 million seems like a small investment, especially for a place of community gathering celebrating the great, the great American way of life. That American way of life thanks to veterans like Charles George, whom the VA is named in honor of. A facility brings over $400 million a year. In addition to the nearly 18,000 veterans in Franklin County bringing additional $247 million in VA expenditure. For every one federal dollar, $1.71 is contributed into the local economy. With that, I say you're welcome. Oh, but there was a far greater price paid embedded in the city of Asheville's history, a history of four Navy vessels named after it. The first one commissioned in 1920, tasked with patrolling Chinese waters. Following the Japanese attack in Pearl Harbor, the USS Asheville was destroyed. No survivors. A price was paid on September 1942 at the Asheville City Auditorium. 160 men joined the Navy to replace that crew. The second USS Asheville escorted convoys. The third USS Asheville supported during Vietnam conflict. The fourth USS Asheville acted today in service as memorial to those men lost at sea. Well, there was a price paid and a promise made. I encourage this city to uphold the promises made to those that carry the burdens for defending the American way of life. Pass a resolution today supporting the expansion of tax exemption for veterans. Pass a resolution today supporting tax exemption for emergency responders. Pass a resolution today supporting North Carolina House Bill 139. Write a check today to the Charles George VA Medical Center to help programs not supported through federal spending. The DAV, American Legion, and the VFW have been a means of support for America's heroes for over 100 years, will continue to do so for many generations. The disabled American veterans are dedicated to a single purpose, empowering veterans to lead high-quality lives with respect and dignity. We accomplish this by ensuring that veterans and their families can access the full range of benefits available to them, fighting for the interests of America's injured heroes on Capitol Hill, and educating the public about the great sacrifices and needs of veterans transitioning back to civilian life. We can be reached at dav14.org or by calling 828-367-0037. I appreciate the time and yield back.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is, are you trying to tell me something? Okay, you just want this. Tom Tessar.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. You all know who I am. I don't see a green light on yet.
Wait, Maggie's got to get back to her seat.
Okay. Okay. So, I'm also with the Asheville Coalition for Public Safety, which I know all of you are very familiar with up at this point in time. We've done a lot of work. We have begged, appealed, pleaded, cajoled, implored, solicited for you to take action to make Asheville safer. We've been doing it for months. We've provided research and data to all of you in making the case for building up the Asheville Police Department. Before the horrific incident of George Floyd, we had 250 officers. Post George Floyd, we now have 173 active officers with only 143 available for solo patrol in patrol cars, which puts us down 40%. We should have at least 200 officers solo patrol availability in this city. That's 57 more than we have now. What a difference that would make on our streets to have that many more officers and patrol cars showing a presence through our city so that we are all protected. I don't know that you're all hearing me or you're choosing to listen to me, but at this rate, I've heard Chief Zach say we're on a trajectory to take 10 years before we are fully back up, full force, on our Asheville Police Department. An article just published in the Asheville Watchdog came out yesterday. I don't know if any of you have read it. One of the highlights that I saw was that the employees of Bushon downtown only leave their employee at night with a gun or a knife. That's how afraid they are for their personal safety. Merchants downtown describe it as being descending into squalor and lawlessness under all of your watches. This is on you. There is no denying the crime has increased here. Deborah Campbell, I'm calling you out.
Sir, if you could please direct your comments to us.
I'm calling the entire council out, but just know that Deborah Campbell was asked by Chief Zach to make some specific recommendations and requests for increased funding for medical care during retirement and increased pay. She said no. She said no.
Sir, please just-
Excuse me, I'm not done, Ms. Manheimer.
I would like you to treat people with respect. If you could please direct your comments to us.
I will continue to direct my comments to the entire room and to the entire council. You want to spend thousands of dollars for a new bathroom when we have a police force that is down 40%? We have crime that's on the rise here? It's totally incongruent. There doesn't make any sense. I want to thank Sage Turner for having the wherewithal to be on the positive side of this. And somebody on this council should call for Deborah's contract.
Sir, please, okay, thank you. Folks, for folks who are speaking, please restrain yourself. Don't point at us. Just make your comments to us. These are policy issues. This is a policymaking body. The manager and the rest of these folks serve, the manager and the clerk and the attorney serve at our pleasure. So, there are cities that don't allow public comment to say someone's name. We haven't gone that far, but you're making me consider whether or not we need to impose that rule. So, with that in mind, the next person signed up to speak, and that is because what has happened to public comment in America today, and it's not in a good place. So, let's try to restore some civility to this. We are trying to hear your input because we are working on a multi-month process of adopting a budget, which won't happen until later in June. Joyce Ridgie is the next person signed up to speak.
Hi, yes, I'm a mayor and council. I've never spoken like this before, but I just-
Ms. Ridgie, pull that microphone, just pull it down a little bit.
Kind of firsthand. I moved to Asheville about eight years ago. Originally, I lived downtown on Market Street. Never felt a threat downtown, saw maybe two homeless people who I knew, and that was it. Now, we decided to retire here, build a house, and stay here. I work in a boutique downtown on Lexington and my husband asked me to join this coalition and I was like, I'm not joining coalition. I don't want to get involved. And he, and he said, well, you're downtown, you know, if something happens to you, don't complain to me. Well, one day when I went to work at 10 o'clock in the morning and I was in the alley getting out of my car that was against a brick wall, a homeless person came up to me and cornered me. Here's the car, here's the wall, and cornered me and said, miss, I need some money. Can you give me some money? I gave him money just to get away. Then, this was last year when he asked me to join in January, this happened with the homeless person coming up to me. Then, my, when I work in the store, I work alone, or my boss works alone. Most of the stores have one person in it. You keep the door open, everybody says hello. This gentleman came into the store when my boss was talking to customers and said, you have any work for me? And she said, no, I'm sorry, I don't. It's a quiet time of the year. Half an hour later, she went in the back to go to the bathroom. He came into the store, went behind the counter, reached for her bag, and stole the money bag. She's a single mother with a child. He stole $700 from her. He stole jewelry. And I'm afraid to go to work. I never felt that way before. The store next door is a young girl. She feel, we all like look after each other, but we're all uncomfortable and afraid. If there could be some police presence, I heard that they used to ride bicycles downtown, something like that, anything to make us not be afraid. And he actually went to another store on Wall Street to sell what he stole from my boss, some jewelry. And that's how we got his picture because he tried to sell it. And homeless people come into the store all the time with blankets on. I'm afraid. I have my, I have my bear spray and I've never done anything like that, but I don't want to feel unsafe. And I lived in New York City for 33 years. I never not felt safe during the day or walking around because there was always police around. And I'm not saying there are thugs in the police, there's thugs in the government, there's thugs, but there's mostly good people. And if it's your son or daughter that's going out every day to put their life on the line, we have to support them. And I just, I don't want to move. Thank you.
Thank you. Honor Moore.
First off, thank you all for your service. I don't plan to yell at you. I'm the co-chair for the Asheville Coalition for Public Safety. I didn't actually prepare anything because I didn't think I was going to be able to make this meeting in time. But our core mission of our group right now is supporting the Asheville Police Department. And we're advocating for them to have more of a significant increase in their salaries, analyzing their benefits after 30 years of service, what that means, and really looking at cities nearby, Asheville, Hendersonville, Greenville, other metro areas, and finding out what they're paying their police departments. You all have heard enough of how expensive it is to live in Asheville. And if we're to get the 42% or 40%, that number keeps fluctuating, hired back, it seems like that's a number-one way to hire back our police department is to, to give a good My husband owns a business where he knows a lot of the downtown business owners. Personally, he's leased to many of them for over 20 years. He had a business across the street from A Hope on Ann Street for 20 years. He's seen the ups and downs of the downtown. I grew up here. I've seen it. I've seen the city when it was boarded up when I was a kid. I've lived in major cities. I've lived in Baltimore, Seattle, New York City. I have not quite witnessed the, I guess, the density of houseless people we're seeing downtown, you know, except for the last year and a half, I would say. So, you know, I know you guys have a really big planning session coming up. I know you guys have a lot to think about. The police department's just one of many departments you guys have to weigh out, but I'd say right now, from my perspective, it's a priority. One other thing I just wanted to say was that our group submitted a follow-up to the National Alliance to End Homelessness meetings. Five or six of our people attended it. We really worked hard to confer and send that follow-up report to you. And so, hopefully, maybe one of you all could send back to Carol Dermott, who supported it and put that together for all of us. That would be great if you guys could respond to that. That's it. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. And the next person signed up to speak is Anthony Pena. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, erase that. Okay, sure. All right. Grace Barron.
So, I appreciate you all extending the deadline for the survey. I don't know if that comes out of the work from the gap AVL report that they were concerned that this way of collecting data about this is going to be skewed. I'm reminded of Mr. Burke's statistics class at Asheville High, which actually comes really in handy at city council meetings. The last time it was because the police made up fake crime data. The last time it was because the police made up fake crime data, but this time it applies in something called self-selection bias. The way that we're doing this process is going to attract very specific people. If we don't have total, or at least 80% participation from city residents, we're not going to get a true picture of how people feel in the community, and those with the most privilege are going to have the time to organize. There are people in the city, um, who are really just struggling to survive, so they may not be able to come to a four o'clock city council meeting or, or fill out the survey, which I would also like to address. One of the questions said, "Community safety and emergency response," and had us rate that. Well, I'm very concerned about public safety. I've consistently been concerned about public safety. My concern about answering this question is that I'm worried that when you all say "community safety," you mean more police. And community safety does not mean more police to me, and it doesn't mean more police to many people in our community. We have, um, you know, this 40%, as these other folks have pointed out, we're down 40% of our police department. 10 years before we can fill it back up, and, and are we going to fund the police department at a full rate again? What, where's the extra money? What's going on with that? We don't even have transparency in the budget to know where these extra funds are from those 40% of missing officers. I, I do want to prioritize safety, and so I would suggest that we address root causes of harm, um, so I, then we can take those, that money and funnel it into something else. According to the John Jay Research Advisory Group on Preventing and Reducing Community Violence, quote, "Community violence is more prevalent in neighborhoods where residents face severe and chronic financial stress." As outlined in the recommendations of the COVID-19 Policing Project's latest report, investment of funds in direct support and community-based safety strategies towards a just recovery instead of doubling down on policing is more likely to produce lasting public safety. I want to name five evidence-based strategies to stop violence in our community. We can improve the physical environment. This is also from that same report. We can strengthen anti-violence norms and peer relationships. I know there's been discussion of a violence interrupter program, which I think would be excellent. Engage and support our youth. This one seems like especially important to me personally, um, and yeah, because our, our kids are in trouble, um, right now, for sure. Decriminalization and treatment and mitigating financial stress.
Thank you. Vicky Meath.
Hello, council. I'm Vicky Meath. I live in West Asheville, and I am the Executive Director of Just Economics. First of all, I want to say thank you so much for providing an opportunity. This is really a historic thing for Asheville, to provide opportunities for the citizens to weigh in on the budget as you, you know, even before your retreat. I really appreciate that. So I'm here to weigh in on a couple of priorities for Just Economics as you approach the budget. The first of which is living wages. Just Economics is a long-time, uh, living wage organization. We actually lead the national network of living wage, um, certification programs across the country. Tomorrow, we are about to announce, tomorrow we will announce our, our new living wage rate for 2023 and some updates to our program. Our living wage rate is based on the idea that someone could afford a one-bedroom apartment somewhere in the Asheville metro area, and in 2023, that number is $20.10 an hour. Again, we'll be announcing some changes to our program and that update, um, tomorrow. So I would ask that this council consider your wages and your longtime commitment to living wages. Additionally, I'd like to talk about transit.
Is that, sorry, Vicky, we're not supposed to ask questions. Is that with benefits or without?
It's without benefits. And, uh, and we know that's a stretch goal. Again, we're, we are, um, announcing some updates to our program, um, tomorrow, but it's based on the cost of housing, and housing has just significantly risen over the past five years, um, in particular. Additionally, I wanted to talk about transit. First, I would love for this council to, uh, fund a study in collaboration with the county to take a look at what the, what we can do in the future with transit. Additionally, Um, Just Economics and our Better Buses Together group has longtime advocated for some, some changes that were in the current master plan, and, um, two budget cycles ago, you all funded, uh, evening service hours and increased frequency to South Asheville. And, um, and as much as I have some high hopes for what could happen with a study with the county, I think that these changes cannot wait until that, that study is completed, and there's some recommendations there. So we're out at the Transit Center all of the time, talking to transit riders, and, um, we consistently hear those same needs. I, just real quick, I, I live in West Asheville, and my car broke down, uh, this winter, and I was using the bus, and I have six buses I can take in an hour, and I would love for my South Asheville, um, neighbors to be able to have some of the same opportunities that make the bus such an accessible, um, uh, transportation, uh, source. So I would ask that you consider funding those two improvements as well as, uh, the transit study. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vicky, if you could follow that up with an email with that, that would be great. The next person signed up to speak is David Rogers.
Hello, council. I'm here to speak in support of the police department. I hope that you give them as much time and resources as you give to other things. Policing is one of the core things that we rely on you to fund, like police and fire are important to the citizens of Asheville. And if it's not important to you, hopefully you'll do it for the tourists. The tourists aren't going to come here if we don't have good policing, and that's the backbone of Asheville right now is tourism dollars. I really hope that you will fund them. If you don't support them, we're not going to have good police. I've been reading more and more about this as good police leave, we have to hire new police, and they're not as experienced as the others, so you'll have lesser policing. You'll have poor first-year policemen versus a 10-year police person. I hope that you would consider taking a ride-along. You'll see firsthand what it's like to be out there. Talk with the police chief about setting up the best time to do that. I was really perturbed hearing that one of you, at least one of you, did not support the police with bulletproof vests. I urge you to complete, completely support them. Bulletproof vests are necessary. If you go on a ride-along, you'll probably want a bulletproof vest, maybe a helmet. I don't know. Again, please support the police. They need your full support now. Maybe increase the amount that you're paying the current police. It's unacceptable to us as citizens here to not have full policing. As you look at your data going forward, um, I've learned that we're doing self-reporting. The police can't even do full reporting, so your data is going to be skewed in the wrong way, like it's self-reported, so less people are reporting crimes, so you're going to think there's less crime. It's not the fact. There are less people, the police aren't collecting the reports. It's self-reported. So that's because they don't have the staff to do it because they're, they don't, they're I didn't really prepare a full speech here. I would, um, be more articulate, I guess, but I, I just want to keep reemphasizing. You guys need to fully support this more than you do affordable housing. I'm here that every week in the Asheville Citizen Times. Where is your support for the police? When you have a domestic violence call, who are you going to call? Do you want them to show up in a minute, or five, or 10? I mean, it's a big thing. We want our police to be fully funded and come when we call them. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Sandy Aldridge.
Good evening, everyone. Great to see all of you and your smiles. I'll make it short and sweet. I would like for the, uh, council to approve funds that were already approved in the past for, uh, transit, for city transit, um, because every year there's more needed. And if that is not done, um, to me, that's the city saying, "We don't care about you." You know, we don't care. We don't care if you have transportation to doctor's appointments, whatever the case may be. And just keep the promise, okay? Because it's very important, and when I saw the bicycle lanes, I was like, "I don't, I don't know what that's about." So that's a special group that is getting that done, and because of that, um, disabled veterans getting off the buses have to stop nigh of the sidewalk. You know, uh, disabled veterans, people with canes, um, people with disabilities, period. So that doesn't, um, that's, that's not safety, and that's another one of my things is safety. But the main one is the budget, and I appreciate that that's on the table this year. As long as I've been in Asheville, it's not been done like this. So that's very exciting, um, and just wish that, um, put money in there for the people that work in all these places downtown, the restaurants and everything, because if certain people disappear, they decide to just leave Asheville because of everything that's going on, it's not getting done. It will be a ghost town, and there will be no tourists here at all. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment of, for folks who signed up to speak under, a public comment for the fiscal year 2023 budget. But, and of course, at any of our meetings, anyone can speak under public comment about the budget if they wish to, and we, as mentioned already, we have opportunities for input around the budget. For, for those of you who came here tonight, thank you very much. Council will be going into our retreat Thursday and Friday to set our priorities, and so it's helpful to have this discussion before the meeting. Any comments?
Um, just a confirmation. Deborah, you mentioned that we're going to be extending the online survey. Can you confirm the date? Is it now the 10th? You said a week.
Yes.
So it'll be Friday, the 10th?
March the 3rd, and we're extending it to seven days. So it'll be March the 10th.
And I wanted to take a moment just to say thank you. After eight years of budget advocacy with some of the people that are in this room, one of the big things that we've asked for is instead of doing the input last, when we can't really do a lot to change the budget, that leaves us feeling like the input doesn't matter because there's nothing we can really do at that late hour. So, um, thank you for being willing to move the, um, input forward and to try new tools like the survey. We do know that there's going to be a learning opportunity through that. One of the things we learned, and I learned this from someone trying to access the survey, we spent a lot of staff time to translate it into Spanish and Russian and Ukrainian, but you had to speak English in order to find it. And so I really appreciate that on Thursday we talked about, how can we elevate that work at the front of the city's website? And immediately saw there was a banner at the top, um, that it, it just seems more inviting when we set that intention, so I wanted to appreciate that. And also, um, you mentioned for printed materials to distribute. I heard you say that community members can call the Community Engagement Manager, Christina Israel. Now, I looked up Community Engagement Manager Asheville on Google, and it pops up the staff's page. It has Christina's email there, which is neighborhoods@ashvilleandseed.gov. It has the number 828-712-4229. You don't have to remember that. Just Community Engagement Neighborhoods Asheville, search, it goes right to that, um, site, or you can look at the city's website to do the survey. So thank you for, um, stepping into those creative spaces and looking at what's possible and, um, moving us in some new directions.
Thank you very much. And to staff.
Well, and just one point of clarification. This isn't the first time we've done early input. We actually did a year where we did a roadshow, and we went around the town and made presentations and got public input, um, but we, but I, but we haven't done it this way. So this, we, and I mean, honestly, what happens is you get a big turnout at the first one, and then you don't at the subsequent one. So this may be a more effective way to do it, um, plus the online survey. Okay, we, we now have general public comment, not to be confused with budget public comment, and we've got a few folks signed up to speak, and the first one is Bill Reed.
Thank you all.
Bill, you're going to need to move that, yeah. There you go.
Thanks for allowing me to speak. It's an off-agenda topic. I was misinformed about what was going on tonight, but I'd like to talk about the developmental, the development plan and infrastructure rollout, 5G in particular. I, the, the plan says to implement it, they would be, the, the planners would be implementing local resources and resources of businesses, and I, uh, my fear is that I can see too easily that somebody like Verizon will come in and say, "I've got a deal for you that's just too good to resist," and 5G rather than fiber optic cable gets rolled out to all communities, including our, our own, where there's going to be a transmitter a stone's throw away from all of our houses, putting out bursts of energy that will go through every cell in our body day and night, 24/7. When we're sleeping, bursts of energy going through. When we're working in the yard, same deal. As a, as a physician, I, I, I can see that the problems are, you might ask, "Why do I care about this?" And it's the fact that our bodies are, its engine is electromechanical, just the way the 5G is. And, and take, for instance, uh, a hormone or an enzyme, they hook to their receptor magnetically, and, and then the enzyme system produces whatever it's going to produce, insulin, uh, brain transmitters, and, and as a result, if we're in competition with these 5G impulses that are going through our bodies, that's abnormal. We've never, as human beings, ever been exposed to this situation of such high energy and pulsing waves, uh, disturbing the harmony of our bodies and the, the electromagnetism that normally, uh, makes for a healthy body. So I would just encourage us to go slow in implementing how we roll out, uh, the, uh, infrastructure for broadband, um, Wi-Fi, and please continue to have, um, a healthy skepticism and, and critical thinking. In closing, I just, I'd just like to recall Marie Curie, who was, uh, a fan of a GWiz technology X-ray about 100 years ago, and here we are with the GWiz technology. Marie fried herself and died because of radiation exposure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Wayne Scott.
Sorry, I don't have flowers and roses this time, but I do have a small math and history lesson. Hopefully, the, uh, tech guy has this on, uh, for the viewers at home. So, uh, three fifths, I'm sure that you're familiar with the number and the phrase. It kind of has a dark resonance in history. Of course, I am referring to the three fifths compromise, um, which basically enumerated black people as less than human, uh, back in the 1800s. And, uh, this is just a different way of looking at the same math that I brought you last week. So for the first, uh, first four years of the Asheville City Council, there were nine members on council, and the next 88 years, uh, there were 36, so 652. I think my last presentation said 653 total years of service by, uh, council members for this government, governmental body. 652 total years of service by Asheville City Council members, then, uh, and only 56 total years by, uh, black citizens. Turned out to be a total of 8.6% black representation on each city council every year. Hopefully, that makes, uh, sense. I guess it can be a little bit confusing. And if we take the average number of city council seats, because there are nine for the first four years, there's been 7.9 city council members on this body. So each person, each seat represents historically 14.1%. I'm sure you're all familiar with the 14.29 that you, uh, currently, uh, hold as a, uh, one representative. So if you take 8.46 and figure out the percentage thereof, we subtract the years of service from, uh, 2022 and 2020, uh, back to 2021, what we'll find is that, uh, we had 8.2% representation on city council. What all of this really means is that sometime in 19, or in 2022, during the service of- Councilwomen Smith, Mosley, and Kilgore, the representation, black representation on city council finally reached three fifths of a person here on city council. That is our history with this body. It's just another way of bringing it to you. And so, you know, congratulations to that. I'm kind of a three-fifths glass full kind of person. I'm optimistic that this historic council will be able to do some historic things and, and change the way that we do things here in Asheville. So thanks. And thank you for your strength tonight, and I'm sorry for having yelled at you in the future, and you're, you're right about public discourse. So thanks for all that you guys.
I think he means future. And the last person signed up to speak under public comment is Katie Dean. Maggie. Hold on, yeah, there we go.
Good afternoon. My name is Katie Dean, and I live in Swananoa. My husband and I do not have a vote in who occupies your seats, but we are customers of the City of Asheville Water. The utility is a regulated monopoly. You have no competition, and I stand before you today to make one simple ask, and that is to prioritize the Asheville water infrastructure above whatever your baseline is into the budget. Incorporate the public health crisis your customers endured over the holidays into your planning and into your budget. I don't want my criticism to be cast towards the hard-working folks who keep our systems in operation. I know firsthand how hard the plant operators, the utility employees work, because my day job is to design and consult and install water and wastewater infrastructure exclusively for municipalities. I think we need to incorporate the fact that our system went offline. And I know for a fact, nobody wants our systems to go offline. You don't want it, I don't want it. Nobody who works in the system wants it, but it happens. And how you plan for any given crisis has direct consequences on the public at large. And I'll use myself as an example. My husband and I own an auto repair shop over on Sweeten Creek Road. We were without water for a week over the holidays. We were closed for a week over the holidays. And as it turns out, how you plan and prepare seems to have a direct effect on our capacity to turn a profit, though I do not have any representation on this council. It's very frustrating. My first consideration when designing a water treatment system is to protect public health. When the water went down on the south side, the first thing I thought of was the hospital and the assisted living facilities on Sweeten Creek Road. And I'll add that I also don't think that anybody receiving in-home hospice care for terminal illness should have to go a week without water. That is a public health crisis. I urge you to maintain a heightened level of awareness of the public health crisis that those without water faced over the holidays as you plan for your next fiscal year. I do not envy the seat that you're in in any way, shape, or form when it comes to this issue, because I know that you all have inherited a complicated problem, and part of which has to do with the history, a longstanding history with the water department. Funds have been used to offset debts, which means maintenance is behind schedule. And on a good day, water infrastructure for most municipalities is behind schedule because it's out of sight, it's out of mind, it's expensive, it's difficult to install. Catching the system up to the unprecedented growth that we've seen over the last decade should be a top priority. We have undersized lines in every direction, which stunts economic potential for small and medium-sized businesses, and it underserves the residents who are already tied to our system. I'll reiterate my ask. Prioritize the City of Asheville water infrastructure in your planning and funding. Pay your in-house engineers to develop an aggressive capital improvement plan, and then fully fund it. The state of North Carolina is on the verge of prioritizing state funding for removing lead-based pipes from the ground. Have your grant writers and engineers ready to capitalize in a competitive capacity for the funding. As politicians, I'll end quickly. I know it's easy to get caught up in projects that are visible to the public.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry.
No, it's okay. We need climate-resilient infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Council, that concludes our general public comment. And we don't have a closed session, I don't think. And I know most of us are trying to go, we're going to be heading over to hear our speaker at UNC Asheville. So with that, we are adjourned.